All right, then, I will call the meeting to order. It is 6:25 on December 14th, 2015, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Ms. Sharkey like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
(inaudible) Ready to begin?
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice of our (inaudible).
Next is the roll call. Will our planning director please lead us in the roll call?
Yes, please let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
We'll move on to approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of November 23rd, 2015. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Chairwoman O'Connor, I would make a motion that we move the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion made by the Vice Chair. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Commissioner Murphy has seconded. Please register your votes for the minutes. And that motion passes five to zero. Next is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available with our Planning Secretary. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Are there any requests to speak forms?
No.
No, thank you. So, we'll move on to the consent calendar, and we have no items on the consent calendar. And next is public hearings. And we have Item 2 for variance, V-15-0004, to allow the creation of a fourth story by permitting the after-the-fact conversion of crawl space to habitable floor area at a currently three-story duplex located within the residential single-family 7, RSF 7, zoning district at 338-95 Calle La Primavera. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Evan Langen will give the staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. On your screens is the presentation for tonight's item. As you mentioned, a variance and to allow after-the-fact improvements to an existing duplex. The item is, well, variances all require approval by the Planning Commission, and I'll walk through the details of the variance at length in just a moment, but first give you your bearings. Our subject property is a single lot that contains two distinct buildings, two duplexes or four units, but contained within two distinct buildings, but again, on one lot. Four units, but converted into condominiums, and so each unit is individually owned. The property fronts Calle La Primavera, that's the road running down the center of your screen, and largest landmark, of course, is St. Edward's Church just across the street. The property itself is a steeply sloping lot, which drops down to a ravine right about here at the middle, and surrounding multiple different, single, I'm sorry, multiple different residential structures of varying scales, single-family, multifamily, et cetera. The buildings themselves, I should say, date to the early 1980s, and as I said, four different units, two structures. Here's your site plan. The subject unit, 338-95 Calle La Primavera, is located within the center circle. Again, the street at your right, and to the left would be that slope that descends down, a little bit of which you can see in the picture at the top right there. And the hatched mark, this would be the focus area of tonight's request, of the variance request. From the street, the building appears to be a single story. The majority of it steps down the slope. As I mentioned, it's a three-story structure, or used to be a three-story structure, but again, from the street, it appears to be just a single story. And then to show you from the rear, this is a view from a neighboring property, and which very clearly shows you the original three levels or three stories of the structure. The first here, second, and third. Of course, in the background is Calle La Primavera, and as I said, the building steps down into the gully. This lowest level of the two different buildings, this is the former crawl space, and again, the subject of tonight's discussion. The subject unit is here at the right, and you can see the conversion, or some pieces of the conversion, the added addition of a door and window space. Doors have been added for all of the other units and to provide access to the crawl space, but to city's knowledge, our subject unit is the only one that's been fully improved and converted into completely habitable space with electricity, a connection for plumbing and so forth. Again, I'll walk through those details with you in just a moment. Show you sections of the building, and once more, the different levels of the structure. Our first or lower, or former first and lowest level, and then the second and the third, the street at the top right, the gully at the bottom left, and in the circle is our converted crawl space, which designed as is empty and unimproved. So, these are photographs obtained by code enforcement of the next-door unit, the immediately adjacent crawl space or immediately adjacent duplex unit, and illustrating what it used to look like and before our subject improvements were made. As I mentioned, just dirt down below and creeping its way up toward a cinder block wall and another structural improvements, the foundation or underbelly of the building. But, as you can see, as it was designed and permitted in the early 80s, originally constructed, no improvements, no electricity, no floor, utterly, just void space, as it was identified in the plans. So then to walk through the history of our current unit, the applicant began making improvements to convert the space into habitable area, into what ultimately becomes a floor in the context of our zoning code. Somewhere in the late, late 2014, in January of 2015, the improvements came to the attention of the city. Code enforcement visited and a stop-work order was issued, and with direction to the applicant, of course, to visit the city, but it appeared the improvements that were being made did not comply with the zoning and building codes, and again, to stop work until the matter was remedied. So, this is what, more or less, what things look like when that stop-work order was issued in January. That said, the applicant, after receiving that order, continued to work and ultimately fully converted the space into what you see here, which includes, as you can see, flooring, electricity, fixed furniture, paint, et cetera, et cetera. So, fully converted, again, in the context and per definition of the zoning code, into a proper floor. A couple more pictures, again, you can see, in this case, ventilation, the electricity I mentioned before, and those fixed pieces of furniture. At the moment, the space is being used as an office. There was, as I mentioned, there is a plumbing connection, but that's been since capped. The early work installed or began to install a shower, that, and it was a connection that was made, in fact, to the neighboring duplex. It wasn't even water that was serving the subject unit, actually, it was water being taken from the next-door unit. But again, that connection's been capped, the infrastructure's still there, but there is no water serving the unit, the shower's been removed. So again, at the moment, it's just being used as office space. So, as I said, the area now meets our definition in the zoning code, which is in front of you, of a story, and as the requisite clearance, it's been fully improved with flooring, electricity, et cetera, and so per the zoning code, it meets the definition, again, of a story. The challenge there, the crux of our variance, is that by converting the space into a story, our former three-story building becomes a four-story building. Four stories are not allowed in this properties or any residential property in the city, within the zoning districts of any residential property in the city, and hence the request for a variance. There are potentially eight findings for a variance, and as applied to a project like this. The eighth is for off-street parking regulations, doesn't apply, so that leaves seven variances that must be made in order for staff to recommend for approval of this deviation from our standards. If all of those findings can't be made, by code, we cannot recommend for approval of the variance. So, in this case, all the findings cannot be made to recommend for approval, and so ultimately, that is staff's recommendation, that the variance request be denied. In summary, to provide an overview, again, the applicant began conversion of that crawl space into habitable area, the net result of which was conversion of an approved three-story building into a fourth story, into a four-story building, and of course, that work was done without benefit of permits. The applicant was issued a stop-work order, and despite that, work continued. As I mentioned, the area's been converted, fully converted, into habitable space with all the trappings thereof, electricity, plumbing, et cetera. The converted space, again, constitutes a story as per definition of our zoning code. The alterations, aside from not complying with our zoning code, there may be further ramifications to the structural integrity of the home. In fact, among the findings is such that we need to make sure that there, we need to find, rather, that there won't be a negative impact on surrounding properties in the case of our subject duplex, the immediate next-door neighbor. The changes made to this space, the conversion of it from a crawl space into a floor, we don't know how that will affect the structural integrity of the home. Did it weaken the home, alter the home? Would improvements need to be made to the whole of the duplex such that it would impact the next-door neighbor's duplex? So, again, another finding that cannot be made. Ultimately, if an approval of the variance were granted, the applicant would have to apply for building permits. As part of that process, supporting documentation would have to be submitted, that speaks to the impacts to the structural integrity of the home, and there could be extensive modifications that need to be made to the home, including, or up to perhaps sprinkling the entire building, affecting, or changing, otherwise improving, or solidifying upper floors, not just the immediate converted crawl space area. There's quite a, quite a list of potential impacts that could result from this conversion. And finally, all findings, as I mentioned, to recommend the approved variance request cannot be made, and so staff's recommendation is to deny the request as proposed. And with that, available for any questions. Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, if I may, just add to what Evan mentioned, our building official informed us that under the building code, when you go from three stories to four stories, there are different code requirements, and that is a little bit of the information where mentioned, a full structural assessment of the entire building would need to be done because now there's a fourth story. So I just wanted to add that to Evan's commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff? Starting at this side, maybe? Commissioner McCann?
What would happen to the space if we deny the variance?
There's still a pending code case for the matter, and so if you deny the request, it defaults back to that aspect of the city's analysis. The long story short, they would be compelled to eventually remove the area, remove the, or, sorry, pardon me, convert it back to its original design as crawl space.
Presumably, after a fight, they would have to reconvene it back.
A process. Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, the city won't be able to issue building permits without it complying with the zoning code, so it would be unpermitted, and so the improvements would have to be removed.
Okay, thank you. And if, what would be, I understand that the existing height and story count is grandfathered in, but let's say there was a lot next door, what would be the max story count and height if there was new construction in that zoning area?
The property qualifies as a hillside per our zoning ordinance, which allows for up to three stories and 33 feet in height. This building, when it was constructed in the early 80s, the height measurement was quite different, a whole different standard, of course, with prior to incorporation, and so the building complied with the standards of the time. In fact, it's listed in the reports from that era as being only 28 feet tall. Under our current zoning code requirements, it's probably, you know, 40 or 50 feet tall. We measure height very differently, so, but to answer your question, a new building would be limited to three stories and having to meet, as I mentioned briefly, very specific design criteria as far as stepping upper stories back from lower stories, and again, 33 feet is a maximum height.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this side? Okay, then, I have a question. So currently, I just need to understand this better, the building on the left, the crawl space is finished?
The, I'm sorry, the duplex unit?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the-
I'm sorry, the space on the left is completed, and the other space is not-
Correct, yes, is unimproved, right.
Okay.
Yes.
And is it rented out, or is it just-
I'm unaware, I don't believe so. As I said, it's my knowledge, it's being used just as office space by the owner.
Okay. I think that's it for my questions. Anyone? No, okay. So, we will open the public hearing then, if we have any comments? Our first speaker is Lynn Muir. Please state your name and city of residence.
Thank you, my name's Lynn Muir, and I'm extremely hard of hearing, so please yell.
Okay.
My wife says I have selective, selective hearing, but not true. So, I just want to clarify one thing. Evan said there was a stop-work notice, there was, for the window only, and that work was stopped. There was an investigative report by Mr. Lee, and at the end of his comments, he says, if it remains, you're going to need permits for these various things. So, there was work happening that was done, but nothing, no stop-work orders except the window, and that work was stopped. So, the, when I got involved with the project, quite a few things had happened, and so I asked Mr. Borga for a copy of the drawings of the project, and he received these from the city, which appear to be pretty much preliminary drawings, and there was no other documentation to say whether it was approved by the county, except the last sheet has a copy from the planning person based on the landscape. And my first question was, and with my experience, a building like this that has this kind of buildup is a four-story building, because if the space below here, under the Uniform Building Code, if more than 50% of the perimeter is over six feet high, it is considered a story. This is almost nine feet high, plus if you, and it says from the level of the floor above, so if you take the thickness of the floor itself, it's about nine and a half feet that the space is. So, in my thinking and working with Mr. Borga, this is a four-story building, and so how can we utilize this? And since it's basically impractical and uneconomical to try to make this a habitable space, our application asks for a usable space, not habitable space, because under the, under the code, if you look at what habitable space is, habitable space is living, sleeping, sleeping or cooking, bathrooms, toilet compartments, closet, halls, storage, utility space, and similar areas are not considered habitable space. So, we ask for usable space, not habitable space. Been evaluated on habitable space, that's not the intent. Like, it doesn't have heating, doesn't have adequate electrical, doesn't have adequate light and ventilation. There's a lot of things that it needs that is not practical or economical to develop. That kind of space is habitable space. So, our application asks for usable space, not habitable. And if you look at our, right on the application, it says usable space, not habitable. And in the descriptions beyond, it's on, like, storage, usable, we, cabinetry that's put inside there today is like cabinetry that you'd put in your garage. It happens to be a little nicer, but it's no different than storage space in a garage or any place in the house that's storage. The thing that tripped me up a little bit is I had asked, I've told many times, this is a four-story building. I had no documentation other than Uniform Building Code that, to use, how to determine the story situation when you have this. I was told we weren't allowed to have a four-story, so therefore, you couldn't have one. Today, I was given a copy of the staff report from the County of Orange that calls this a three-story building. So, had I have been given this when we were given this, we wouldn't be here. So, I asked the fact that this is not being considered habitable space, it's usable space, it's a space that's there that needs to have something done, or leave it just like it is, you have to get in there to maintain it. I assume the doors were placed there when the project was built, because again, I don't have a copy of actual working drawings, but I saw a microfiche today of actual working drawings with county stamps. Why weren't we given that at the first of the year when Mr. Borga first asked for it? I did not ask for it, Mr. Borga did. So, there is, the city, in their files, have working drawings for this project, was stamped, and I was, like I say, I was given the staff report today. Thanks for listening to me, and if you'd like to move forward. We've asked, since the documentation is incorrect, we had asked to be, it to be continued and the documentation corrected to reflect what we asked for. But I'd leave that to your discretion. I do have copies of what the project was when Mr. Borga purchased it, plus I have a complete file that I call document, very file, and I'd like to give you as the chairman, this document and a copy of this, and then you can review it.
All right, thank you. Well, here, I'll take those and I'll pass them down, and then-
That was, that's the condition of the project when Mr. Borga purchased it.
We'll move on to Mr. Borga. Did you want to speak now?
Sure.
Okay.
Basically, I could go on for half an hour about this entire story, but I'd like to just make myself available to answer any questions you guys have regarding this project.
Two minutes.
I have two minutes.
You have three.
Two minutes, okay. Well, basically, I purchased the property in September of 2014. The downstairs storage room is as the pictures are presented to you, as was the condition, was it had a concrete floor, it had drywall, it had drywall in the ceiling, and it had recessed electrical lights. That's the way the property was purchased. The only thing I did to this property is I installed some very expensive cherrywood storage cabinets. We painted the drywall, and we put porcelain tile that I had used in, by remodeling my condo, had some leftover expensive porcelain tile, and I put it over the existing concrete floor. So, in the, in the documentation you got from the city that says I went ahead and did all this work to try to make a habitable space, that's completely not true. All I did is paint drywall, porcelain over existing concrete floors, and put in some very expensive storage cabinets. That's it. There's no water, there's no heat, there's no gas for any heating, there's no showers, I can't cook down there. It's strictly no different than a garage, except without a car in it. It's strictly a storage room. Each one of my neighbors has a storage room, just like mine. Couple of neighbors have it in original condition, which is a dirt floor, no drywall, and one electrical light. One of my neighbors does have concrete floor that was put in without permits, does have drywall, but it was put in without permits. Mr. Langen's been aware of this for over six months, and nothing's been done with regards to my neighbor. Only I've been singled out for prosecution by the city. So, as you can imagine, this is a pretty emotional issue for me. I'm 62 and a half years old. I've had cancer twice, been in remission now 21 months for my second battle of cancer. I'm a 38-year State Farm agent, looking to come down to Dana Point to, as my doctor said, you need to take some time off, don't work more than three days a week, and relax and de-stress, and I've had nothing but stress since I've gotten here. So, that's kind of my situation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have about this in complete truthfulness. I have nothing to hide from anybody here, but this was never designed to be a livable space. It's an existing building, it was built back in the 80s, it's a, clearly a four-story building. There's at least four other structures in the town that we've identified that are as big as this building, if not bigger, that are clearly permitted as four-story structures back at the same time this building was permitted as a four-story structure. So I'm asking you to simply give me the permits, the ability to permit this room as a storage room. I intend not to live in it, that's all I'm asking, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Borga. All right, I will bring this back to the Commission for comments. Does anyone want to start us out? No one?
I have a couple of questions for staff.
Okay.
Is there a difference in zoning code before, or relative to habitable space or usable space?
So, while those comments were being made, because I wasn't sure which code Mr. Muir was referencing, whether it was the building code or our zoning code, our zoning code does not have a definition for habitable space or usable space, but has a definition for a story. And in reading the definition for a story, which I know was earlier, that staff and the applicant have had this discussion previously, as well as earlier today with Mr. Muir, under the zoning code definition, it does qualify as a story. And the zoning code regulates the number of stories.
Okay. I think that, that's actually the only question that I have.
Okay. Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. I do have a couple additional questions that have arisen to me based on the comments. I see in the pictures, Mr. Borgi, a couple of, look like air ventilation grills. Are those just purely ventilation, and they're not hooked up to any force air?
Hold on, I need to open the public hearing before you comment, okay? Proceed.
Lynn Muir, those are the original foundation vents that were there to ventilate the under-floor space, and they're still there, they were not taken out. They put regular heating grills on the inside, but if you look at the outside, it shows the, the foundation vents are still in place.
Okay, great, thank you. The window, you got a stop-work notice for, you're saying the window, which I'd love to see that, but-
The work, do you like to see the stop-work order?
I'd like to see, Mr. Muir had, said he had a copy of the stop-work order, I'd love-
It's actually, it's actually a copy of it right inside the binder.
Oh, okay.
If I could get it, show you exactly where it's at.
No, I'll take a quick peek at that, but, so, were you in fact replacing the window of some sort, because you didn't identify that in your list of things that you are doing with the porcelain tile and the painting the drywall?
Okay, one of the problems I had with this entire thing, which led to this whole unfortunate set of circumstances, was when I bought the property, the seller failed to disclose a lot of facts about this property, one of which I was, I was, in my, seller disclosure statement said there were no CCNRs for this association, bylaws only. Well, CCNRs are the working documents for a condo, which are the rules and regulations. I was never given a copy of those documents in escrow. The seller said there were no cop, there were no CCNRs for the condominium association, and I kind of questioned that in my mind, because I've been a State Farm agent for 38 years, I've insured condominium associations for many, many years, but I never insured one that was this small, with only four units. So I thought, well, maybe if it was only four units, maybe it can not have CCNRs. My real, the realtors that listed the property for sale never produced any CCNRs, my agent never questioned it. I asked the sellers repeatedly, verbally, about CCNRs, I said, no, there were no CCNRs, and they put it in writing. So I had no rulebook to go by, and I approached my next-door neighbor, I said, I'm planning on making some improvements to the downstairs storage room, putting some cabinets, putting some flooring, and I'm planning on putting a larger window in where that window is currently. And the day that the window installation started was the day that they came and ran down to the city, reported me to the city planning, planning office for the work that was being done there. I got the stop-work order on the window, and I stopped work, I stopped work on it, I stopped it. And I found out what the cost was going to be to get a permit on that, and I said, you know something, it's causing too much problem, it's not that big of a deal for me, and my next-door neighbor has got so much opposition to that, big deal, let's just let it go. So we patched it up. So, we patched it up and moved on. And by moving on, it was strictly going ahead and painting the drywall, installing my storage cabinets, and taking the porcelain tile and put it over the existing concrete. The last step in the project was my prior owner had gone ahead and started to install a shower down there. And there's a hot and cold line that were put into the room. And I didn't want, I wasn't planning on having a shower down there, like I said, occupying the space at all. So, I went ahead and wanted to have the lines capped off and put the wa, get the water out of there. I did not know at the time that my prior owner had gone ahead and had his plumber run the piping for the hot and cold water, not into the plumbing system for my unit, but for the plumbing system of my next-door neighbor's unit. Mr. Coats back here. And he didn't, wasn't aware of it, and I wasn't aware of it until my workers came to go ahead and cap those lines off, and they shut my water off, and nothing was happening. We saw the water coming out of the plumbing. So, when they went to shut down his side of the plumbing to see if that might be where the water was coming from, sure enough, that's where the water was coming from, from my room. And we eventually got that water shut off, got the lines capped, so there is no water down there at all anymore.
Thank you. And last question. You just owned the one condo. You don't own both sides of the building, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, any further questions from anybody here that could go ahead and answer?
Any questions for Mr. Borga?
Okay.
All right. That's it. Thank you. All right. So, we're back to the commissioners. Any questions for staff or anything like that? Okay. Then I will choose someone to go first. Commissioner Murphy, would you?
Madam Chair, if you could please close the hearing again.
Yes, thank you. Close the public hearing. When I get off the machine, it gets confusing. Okay, go ahead.
Well, listening, listening to you, sir, it certainly brings up some issues. But I have to, I personally keep going back to the zoning codes and to the ordinances, and those are, those are the documents that everybody needs to go to when, when they're going through, you know, building or whatever it is. Because that's really the law of the land or the law of the city. And so, those have to be followed, and we all have to be familiar to them. I can see that you, you have some concerns about what went through during your real estate transaction. And you may have been given misinformation.
I was.
But the redress there may be in the courts in terms of what, what statements were made to you and the legalities of that. But on its face, at this point, I just feel that the laws were enacted for these reasons, so that everybody is on notice about what they can or can't do, and what they can build or can't build here in the city. And, and those rules have to be followed. There has to be consistency. And it's been very clear from the zoning, at least as far as I've seen from the zoning codes, three stories is the maximum. And the space underneath from the little we've seen certainly does not look like, in its infant stage, these pictures, a story by any means. And in trying to dress it up with furniture or whatever else, doesn't change the fact that it looks like it's not in compliance to what we consider to be the laws of this, of this city. Also, in looking at the paperwork that was prepared by the city staff, and under the variance V one-five dash zero-zero-zero-four, the first one stands out in terms of that the strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified regulations would result in practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardships. And these are things that, all of these have to apply. Well, that first one just does not apply, in my opinion. Going to the fifth one, the fifth variance that has to apply, that the variance request is made on the basis of a hardship condition and not as a matter of convenience. That does not apply. I also find number four, that, which reads that the granting of the variance will not constitute a great, a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on other properties in the same zoning district. Well, to add on what looks to be a fourth floor, is really, flies in the face of what everybody else is doing in that area and how they're conducting themselves and what they're doing with their space. So, it, it's, this is not anything personal at all. It's just, the zoning codes are quite plain, and that's what we have to look at. That's what keeps this city going, and it keeps everybody on notice. Everybody has to have notice. And if it's in the zone, zoning codes, if it's in the ordinances, they're there for a reason. They're not just penned in by the staff. They have been worked with county, with the city government over and over and again, over and over again, to make them more specific and clear to prospective builders and owners, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy, Vice Chair?
Yes. So, it's, you know, it sounds like a pretty bad situation. And unfortunately, I don't think this is the place for it to be solved. As a planning commissioner, all the noise has to be set aside, and we just look at the standards and zoning ordinance that we're charged with enforcing and administering. And what I heard tonight is really a building code issue and a real estate transaction problem, and not a necessary zoning issue. I didn't hear a discussion about how the request meets any of the tests required by the zoning ordinance for us to justify the request. So, what, the way I look at it is, the history of the site is irrelevant. If you came to us tonight and asked us to do this, would I be able to approve it? And is there enough evidence in the record that shows that this meets the minimum threshold of all those questions? And I can't find even one, frankly, that fits. And like Commissioner Murphy said, it's not personal. This is just, if, if somebody came in, you know, and they had bought a house with a garage that had then been turned into usable space, and that was the reason we gave them a variance for parking, I don't know where this, this becomes a slippery slope issue for me. And frankly, we have a developed property that obviously had no hardship in developing. And to grant a variance to address a, you know, an unfortunate situation, in my mind, seems to be one of the main reasons that we wouldn't approve this. And I, I just can't get behind it at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I'm very sympathetic to, to your situation, and quite frankly, it's kind of heart-wrenching. And yet, it's pretty clear from a zoning code perspective that you don't meet the criteria for the findings for a variance, to be eligible to find for a variance. So, and you're not kind of close, in my opinion. And one thing just to be aware of is that the city takes precedent into a lot of consideration. And so, if we were to grant a variance here for the creation of a fourth story, it would set a precedent to where it would be more difficult for us to deny story addition variances in the future. And we don't want to do that, or at least I don't want to do that. So, I'll be voting against the variance.
Commissioner Claus?
A dressed-up pig is still a pig. Okay. Here's what we're being asked to do. Okay? We're being asked to create a fourth floor by permitting the after-the-fact conversion of crawl space to habitable floor area at a currently three-story duplex at blah, blah, blah. Okay. You can't get there from here. There's nothing that I can even think of to say that means, well, gee, sure, we should try to go ahead with this. This is, this is not permissible by anything that I know in this code.
Well, I kind of have a lot to say about this. You know, the four stories were probably granted under the county and before the city was incorporated. So, if you're seeing other buildings, that's probably what the situation was. With regard to usable versus habitable, I feel that, you know, usable space is more like storage. You know, unfinished basement storage. Habitable, in my opinion, and I don't know what the legal definition is by the city's standards, but, you know, habitable to me would, would be, you know, if somebody is spending, you know, time down there. And whether it's for working in an office or, or whatever, that, to me, is considered, considered habitable. I do take issue that permit, permits weren't, you didn't seek permits. I mean, I've done repair and replace, you know, my toilets in my bathrooms and done remodels all the time. And I have to get a permit for the drywall. I have to get a permit for the electrical. And actually, I was glad, because I was in a nineteen-sixties house and the wiring was bad, and I was glad that it actually, you know, having an inspector out there made sure that my, my contractor was doing the right thing. So, the permitting process is important, because it's not only protecting you, but it's also protecting your adjacent neighbors. And whoever is even going to spend time down there, if you're going to, you know, were to make it into habitable space, you want to make sure that there's enough ventilation down there that they won't pass out. I am concerned also that you've circumvented the city's engineering and structural review process. Doesn't seem like that was done. If you're pulling out dirt from underneath the entire building, and it, you need to have some structural engineering on that. You know, I've served on this planning commission for a lot of years, and I've seen it's very difficult to get a variance, because it's very difficult to pass the hardship test. And occasionally, you know, we do grant a variance, because yes, there is a hardship on a lot that it would be very difficult to, you know, build a structure. That's a hardship. I don't see a hardship here. And so, I think it just fails the test. So, I'm just looking at it from the zoning code standpoint, as my other commissioners have said, there's, there's no hardship here. So, those are my feelings, and I, anybody want to add anything else?
Madam Chair, for the purposes of the record, can you please mention that the applicant or the applicant's representative provided you with the binder that showed some pictures? That was passed around to the commissioners to review, and that we will keep a copy of that for the administrative record?
Okay. Yes, we did receive this. Thank you very much, and the handout. And the commissioners did get a chance to, to review it, correct? Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner McCann?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd move to, I'd make a motion to deny the variance. And I believe that's the resolution as written. I can read the whole, you want me to read the whole?
Yes, please. And, and just so we know that by voting yes is for the denial, is correct?
Yeah. Can I just clarify too, that in the record, and I'm only clarifying this because I heard a lot of comments from the commissioners tonight about various elements on the list on page three of the staff report, that you didn't feel there was substantial evidence in the record to support making those findings. But the very, or the resolution right now only talks about two of those. And so, if the commission wanted to raise other findings that they thought were not supported, and if Commissioner McCann wants to add that to his motion, we can amend the resolution to clarify that there are additional findings that you did not think that you were able to make tonight, based on what was presented to you.
Thank, thank you. Sure, I'll, I'll do that. So, I would move that the commission approve a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Dana Point, the nine variance V one-five dash zero-zero-zero-four to allow the creation of a fourth story by permitting the after-the-fact conversion of crawl space to habitable floor area.
At a currently...
At a currently three-story duplex at three-three-eight-nine-five Calle La Primavera. I would amend that to also say that, to deny that being a habitable or usable floor area, whatever the difference is legally, and also that the commission was not able to make any of the findings required for a variance pursuant to section nine point six-seven point zero-five-zero of the Dana Point zoning code. Is that adequate?
Yep. So, just to be clear, you as a maker of the motion are saying that you would not be able to make any of the eight findings that are listed on pages three and four of the staff report?
Correct. And I'm also...
And that the distinction between habitable versus usable is not helpful to...
Correct.
Or not relevant.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner McCann made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Commissioner Murphy made the second. Please register your votes. And again, a yes vote is a denial, and a nay vote is overturning it. And the motion passes five to zero, and the variance is denied.
Okay. So, we will move on to old business. There is no old business. New business? There is no new business. So, staff reports. Will our planning director or perhaps Evan? Staff reports.
Excuse me. Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to remind you all that we will not have our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which would have been December twenty-eighth, so that meeting is canceled. And also, Shayna Sharkey will be reaching out to each of you. We want to get sort of a standing time on the calendar prior to planning commission meetings in the event that you want to meet with staff to go over any items. And so, do not please feel compelled that you have to have those meetings. I think typically on a lot of, the more routine items, you probably won't want or need that time. But in the event that you, that you do, and particularly when there are more complicated projects that come before you, we know it's often difficult to get a staff report a few days before and just for all of that information. So, a lot of other cities have this practice, and we wanted to make it available to all of you as well. So, it'd be the staff planner, as well as the planning manager. And on occasion, from time to time, I might attend, but I might not. So, Shayna will be reaching out to you to find out what those times would be. And again, you don't have to attend those, but they're there in the event that you, you want them. That's all I have, except to say, happy holidays, because we will not be seeing each other again. Thank you.
Well, the staff lunch. All right. So, then I guess we're on to commissioner comments. So, Commissioner Murphy?
This is off-topic, but I just wanted to congratulate staff and whoever is involved in that. For many years, up in Capitol Beach, we have not had a lighted seasonal tree, which was part of the history, a rich history of that, and very many figures were involved in that of great consequence, people that you've heard their names. So, that has not happened, and it became a reality, I know you're aware of it, a reality a couple of weeks ago. And as you, as you drive down Estrella, and you're heading to Camino Capistrano, and there's, I forget what they call, the marker that... Whatever is there, the big, the big rock, and it's got the name, you are, you know, welcome to Capistrano Beach. And it's all lit up now. It's beautiful. They, and they brought in some of the old little decorations that the kids made, used to make yearly years and years ago. little decorations that the kids made, used to make yearly years and years ago. And then at the, at the end, at Camino Capistrano, it's all lit up, and it has those, the old lanterns there. It's just very impressive, and it's very nice, and it's very appreciated.
Vice Chair?
Yes, well, I not, I'm not sure if I'll make the lunch, so I want to wish staff and everybody a happy holidays. I have certainly a lot of things to be grateful for this holiday season, one of which is to sit with my esteemed colleagues up here, but also work with you guys, staff, and I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think the city looks great right now with the lights at night. We were able to go to the boat parade, and I was surprised how many lights are on all the trees down there, even though the luminosance is not there. But lights everywhere, lights at La Plaza, lights on private property, seemingly public property. So, it all looks great, and I also want to wish everyone happy holidays. And one other little thing is, I really like, when possible, if we have any visibility on what's coming up on like the next staff meeting, if it's going to be packed or not, or, I don't know. It depends on, I know when the cutoffs are for what commission happens, but to the extent that, you know, if there, especially if there's a big thing coming up, just to get a little bit of visibility on that. And also to Shayna for giving me the smaller binder.
Commissioner Claus?
First of all, thank you to Shayna, yes. You can see you've made a big, big big importance with this, this staff to have easier things to do, okay? I wish everybody a wonderful holiday season. I too am very impressed with what the city has done without the, those luminosities that were, that were so spectacular. It's just, it's stunning, you, you would think that it is not used things, which is really what it is, okay? They've just done a really remarkable job of it, so. And a happy holiday season to all of my fellow commissioners and to staff. And thank you very much for staff. You are vitally important to us.
Well, I can't resist, it's being the Christmas season, and you're Mrs. Claus. And Mr. Claus sitting right there. Every year, it's, it's the running joke, so I have to do it.
Yes, it gets worse. We live on Santa Clara Avenue.
Well, I wanted to...
So, make sure you're good. Treat me well.
Well, I do want to say, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, or Hanukkah, or whatever it is that everyone celebrates to staff and the commissioners and our audience. And it's, you know, since this is kind of the end of our comments before the new year, I just want to say everything that we've done, well, you guys have done this past year. I really thank you for all the hard work, and I think a lot of good things have happened in the city this year. So, you should be congratulated, and yes, the city looks beautiful with all the holiday lights, so. Thank you to the city. All right, so then, we'll move on to adjournment, and the next regular meeting of the planning commission will be held on Monday, January eleventh, ooh, it says 2015, I think it means 2016, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter in the city council chamber located at 33282 Golden Lantern Suite 210, Dana Point, California. Happy holidays. Thank you.